This is item Board of Assessments, Application for Abatement. I don't know who wants to start first, Ron or Jay?
I've got two. I've got another one that's just...
And why don't we have Jay start and let me finish?
Okay, go ahead. Am I supposed to hold?
You have the floor.
I have submitted an abatement thing because we were under the impression first that supposedly something from the town lawyer, a correction could not be made. And so, it might have been Ron who suggested we ought to proceed with an abatement as being the cleanest way of dealing with it. But essentially, we sold in 2020, eighteen point five acres, all of eighteen point five acre acres, all our land south of Sabina Road to Lynda Powers, to her company called, I think it's Sabina Road LLC. So that should have gone into the tax rolls as a tax bill that hurt, and it was. But that eighteen point five acres was not removed from our acreage. So our acreage, instead of being thirty five point four four acres, should have been sixteen point nine oh. And therefore, because of that situation, excuse me, basically, and which includes our homestead parcel and what we refer to as the West Lot, which is, for anyone who knows Sabina, to the Western Fady property. Originally, all the land we purchased from Edward Larrabee the Elder was Samuel F. Fady's homestead. And when we sold our original homestead house to the Fades, that retained lot number forty two, and all the remaining land became forty two A. We then subsequently sold parcel of land between Fady and where we live now to the Brokries, which became forty two B. So we now have, at that point, we had, I would say, three subparcels of forty two A, our homestead one, the West Lot, and the land south of Sabina Road. And that used to be shown by, and I have a copy of it here, little broken arrows that connected all of those parcels. And basically, let me try to make this halfway clear. The, that all stems, and I've got the history here of Samuel Fady's property, is, for anyone who knows Sabina, Sabina Road in the chart I have here in eighteen seventy stopped alongs to the east of my closure's house. And if you wanted to get down to the water, the only thing I can conclude is you happened to open and close pasture gates because there were fence lines that went across what is now the extension of Sabina Road. So in the history I have of land, that's how forty two and subsequently forty two A became all interconnected. And so what I did, and I included the math, is I figured out, you have the cost per acre of the acre around the homestead, and then you have the cost per acre for the other land. And what I did was I took, calculated the cost per acre of all the other land, and then multiplied that by the eighteen point five four acres, which we sold to Powers. And that's the amount that we requested abatement. So I brought a lot of backup information if anyone wants to be bored with it, but, you know, we spent a lot of time looking into this. There was also, the question was raised, can parcels, when you sell a piece of land out of the middle of another, can those two parcels remain connected? And I do have the ruling of the state Supreme Court on that and a case history when we hired our lawyer, who went and showed that that's totally a valid procedure.
So you could have interconnected land?
Say again?
Land is not abutting. Abutting each other can be interconnected legally, essentially. Okay.
And I can grab here and just walk past the various members of the board, if you grab the right piece of paper, and just give you a glance. That happens to be the eighteen seventy map showing where Sabina Road was. And it's interesting that this is a coastal here, they sort of a chart, they have all the property lines on them. And one thing that's interesting is there's Queen Anne Street, which we refurbished, which is opposite the Fady's driveway, is actually shown in eighteen seventy as leaving from what's now the Fady's barn and going a thousand plus feet to the south. And there's now a very steep hill if you go down the whole Quimper Road, and again, to the supposition on my part, they wouldn't have taken heavy horse-drawn turrets up that hill, they would have gone in on the level. And that's, and Queen Anne Street is mentioned as an old woods road, I think that's in eighteen eighty four. Here we go, I'll... Here is a tax map after the sale to Fady. You can see this is the land we sold to Fady, right here. And then the broken arrow from there to there shows that this lot is still part of that lot. And another broken arrow from here to our eighteen point five four acres down there shows that it is all one lot.
And that was created from the town with those arrows, correct?
This is a town, yes, map. Ron, there's, if you want to join us, ahead. See that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I've calculated the requested abatement in a reasonable fashion. We're not requesting, you know, the amount you had made of the new build to Powers because that wouldn't be equitable. So that's why I went back and did the calculation quite carefully, and I submitted the summary sheets with the abatement form. And the other problem is that our West Lot in a tax bill is called forty two C. And basically, so it's a case where basically, that land and the land south of the road has been built out by the town to different people, or different entities, I should say. So one of the things I will do after we solve whatever it is with the abatement, I will address a review of the tax map related to what we call our West Lot, and send that to Christine for the appropriate people to approve it. And so whenever the tax map gets redrawn again, because right now, it says the Sabina Improvement Association owns a significant portion of our West Lot, which makes our West Lot illegal. So the other thing that did come up in terms of the West Lot being connected to the homestead lot, we had two people approach us on buying the West Lot. And we told them they couldn't do that until five years after we sold the land to Brokries. So we sort of told them politely to go away and come back, I guess it's this year or next year, if you're still interested. Forgive me if I've rambled a bit, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
So what you're saying is forty two C should really be brought back into lot forty two A?
Yes.
Where it was originated from?
That's where it was created. And again, part of the problem, as Julie said to me, is there isn't a hundred percent good correlation between her software and the mapping software. So, you know, there's no blame to be cast on anyone if it just is a, you know, a situation where technology is sort of fooling around with our thinking.
Anyone have any questions? Ron, you want to go?
Okay, I think so. First of all, well, I'll present the agenda and say a few things first. The assessment is that if him just, I may have to stop because I mean, yes, just value constitutionally is not a thing.
Say again?
Just value constitutionally by the state of Maine is not a thing. What is the law meant by that simply? And I've got two documents for you both to read, dealing with that fact. Now, I hear what Jay's saying, but, and I know now that it would be hard to abate either one of them because he's got the three acres in lot A, it is abatement. The map showed forty two C and the piece he sold to Sabina Road Association as being one. Obviously, it can be one because the public road splits it. He could have sold that anyhow. Now, if we take into question that it's all past forty two A, then he, with his home said they are, he could have sold both lots, both bodies, two C and the money just sold because you allowed, you allowed to pay too. That's the difference in interpretation, what his attorney is saying.
Isn't he saying that they were all connected and then after the parcel?
They're not contiguous.
It doesn't, he doesn't claim they're contiguous, but they, the town map for years has shown through those arrows.
But the fact is, it's all about the tax maps. Tax map has nothing to do with it. There's a bunch of surveys in here that explain it more than the tax maps.
Yeah, but we billed him as a continuous lot for years.
Yep.
And then, and then why would we change that status?
Then we lost twelve thousand dollars to do it in taxes. That's what the problem is.
Yeah, but there's plenty of roads that have public roadways through them, that have, and that you own both sides of it.
And all they have is more in this town. Not anymore in this town because there are a number of people that want to abate, to do, put lots together to save the taxes. Even one of the good friend, the lawyer of mine, and I told him, I can't do that. Well, the town attorney's saying, you follow what is in the law. Because we have no audits, says that we can do it any different than follow that. You've got to write and put it right in, and it goes for the selectmen, and then they decide it just can't be done.
There's a state ruling that says it can be. There's a court document that says it can be done that way.
How did we even have it looked at again?
I'll see, go to the book, okay. The, I did review what he said about where they're coming up with the law and the court saying about the lots and that they deal with subdivisions. But no other than, except for in my book, that the lots have to be contiguous, they have to be. That was fine. In other words, I wasn't going to do anything to hurt an even valuable asset to the town. But when he sold the piece across the road, which separated the lots completely, it would, it shouldn't have separated in the first place.
He sold it to the abutting neighbor though. It was sold to the abutting neighbor.
Sold to what?
It was sold to the abutting neighbor.
Doesn't matter, it's a separate lot.
Why does that matter?
But it, but it was, it was, it didn't change how the, with the arrows there, those lot, those arrows were showing for years as a continuous lot.
The arrows cannot be there because it's two separate lots.
But it's been there forever.
It doesn't matter. You have a mistake, you correct the mistake. And that's exactly what I did. And not only that, but yes, I do, I even went through the surveys, and the conflict of, between Brian Smith survey and the survey done to Jay on the north east west corner of that lot.
Did that change the continuous nature?
But that has nothing to do with the town.
It does though.
No, it doesn't.
If, if the survey, if a survey is showing that it's a continuous lot, you have to abide with the survey.
Well, that's not the survey showing it's a continuous lot. That is a tax map showing it's a continuous lot. That was done, like he said, by, by the lawyer.
I have a, the deed I bought the land from Edward Larrabee shows them all as three parcels of one lot. You, you went back in history a lot, well, and you started with when, when there was a gate, but the town took the rest of the road to the water. So that was a long one. What we're dealing with is the facts today, that that's, that's a whole issue, and how it should be assessed. And that's what I'm getting at, that, I can't do it anymore. Does the town attorney say, unless you want to adopt on audits, that allows me to go and, and join lots together, just to save taxes? And I've got that written for you in here when it comes to the law too, you can't do it.
So, but it was joined before.
But before it was...
And it wasn't just to save taxes, that's how it was presented and purchased.
I don't know how it was purchased. I don't know. He showed me in two thousand thirteen, or prior to that, it still showed the arrows doing that. And that, that's fine, you know, they could do that. But what that does is, that creates about ten to twelve thousand dollars worth of taxes for the collector on the waterfront lot that's got a hundred fifty feet of waterfront, even though there'd be a good problem down there. That's not my problem. Now, what I'm getting at is the two abatement requests. What he's done, he's put the three acres back into A, and the basement, the abatement is based on that. And the C is an abatement by itself. So what I did, I went through, took the three acres back out, so the abatement is more than what he wanted for, for that lot, by the hell, lot forty two C. Because forty two C, the market value, the just value of forty two C is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, a waterfront lot. And you know as well as I know, anybody and everybody from out of state is going to pay what they get if you get a lot like that. That's what it is. I'm just doing the assessment and trying to...
But he's not trying to sell it off as a separate lot.
Yes, he's going to sell it off as a separate lot because it, he went by a five-year thing because somebody, someone told him that. If in fact, it was all part of forty two A, he could have sold it then. He could, because he could sell two lots, if they were contiguous. And that's what they're getting at, but they're not contiguous.
But they've been treated that way for twelve years.
I don't care if they've been treated that for a hundred years.
And, and, and he has, Jay, what is the court ruling that you have? Not, not a court, there's a...
The fact that you, you can have these arrows connecting, not in a contiguous lot.
The Supreme Court of Maine, the Bakla versus Town of Stonington, can you share that?
I went through all my papers and grabbed what I thought was appropriate, and I hope I have here. I have Bakla versus the Town of Stonington in nineteen ninety four, and that ruled that non-contiguous lots can be the same lot number. And I have, and it said, well, again, do you want me to glance at that, or did I send that to you, Ron?
I, I had it, I read it. I did. It did make some sense to me. And then, and then it comes to the point where, are they talking about a subdivision which else is not?
No.
But it goes to the town to be a subdivision. And that's...
We can't make assumptions that define by subdivision, I mean, says that there's non-contiguous lots that can be considered one parcel from a Supreme Court of Maine. I think that has a substantial impact, as to what he's saying.
It's not a subdivision.
No one's claiming a subdivision. No one's claiming that...
That's what the law is, it has to do with subdivisions.
The Bakla, Bakla's lot was in a subdivision?
Is that a subdivision, Jay?
Is ours a subdivision?
No, 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 was the Bakla a subdivision?
Uh, it's been a long time since I've read it. I don't think I can give you an opinion without sitting down and studying it, I'm sorry. But here is a memo, we offered to sell the West Lot to the daughter of Edward Larrabee the younger, and we're talking about a price of sixty thousand dollars for that waterfront lot. And the memo that we sent in two thousand twenty said, the sale of this land is subject to the following restrictions. At this time, the land can only be sold to Edward Larrabee of Butter, and Edward Larrabee may not sell, gift, or otherwise transfer title to this land for a period of five years from the date of the sale. So that, but essentially, it says these two before-mentioned restrictions are only in effect until April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, after which land may be sold without these restrictions. Kathleen, I think is her name, wanted to have a house convenient to her elderly father, and so that was her interest in the land. And so, but, now I can't tell you who we approached in the town, but we did approach the town, and that's what led to writing this thing to the, essentially to Catherine Larrabee, saying that, you know, she could buy it essentially in her father's name because he's in the butter, and without triggering any subdivision. So, and someone here, prior to that, told us, since we had sold the land to Brokries as a portion of, let's see, that's the, yeah, here's a complete history of all of the land. Jay and Charles Parr sold a three point one one acre lot located between the Fady land and the Paris homestead lot to Jim and Elphie in Brokries. This newly created lot became forty two B. So that's where B first appeared on the thing. But again, I can divide, in terms of it all being originally one parcel, I do have now all the deeds going back into the early eighteen hundreds in my files. And essentially, the deed from Edward Larrabee the elder to me, it was just me in seventy one, referred to the land as the northern parcel and the southern parcel, and that they were still part of the same piece of land, even though Sabina Road ran between them. That's because, as I said, the, this was all one parcel before Sabina Road ever existed. And I show the eighteen seventy chart as being indicative of that. I mean, you know, there was, after Kathleen, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he owns property in Sabina. He's a property developer, and he develops land in Bernswood primarily, but he said he was interested in developing a piece of land. And we told him, made this copy for him as well, and said, as we have been informed, we can't sell it because it's part of forty two A until five years after the sale of the land to Brokries. So we've tried to do everything, you know, in as legal a fashion as we can, so there's, I mean, you know...
So you've turned down sales, based upon the fact that...
Yeah, we turned down potentially two sales, because, and I don't know who we talked to then at the town, who said, yes, you, you, you know, you're limited in that fashion.
I, I feel at a tremendous disadvantage because you have documents that I can't see and haven't read, and you have documents that I can't see and haven't read, and I feel...
You're going to see mine, you're going to leave them with you.
Yeah, but we can't rule on it without...
No, you can't, or everything, they put them all together.
There's so much to consider tonight, I would, I would hope that you wouldn't vote on it tonight.
Right. You want to send it to Board of Appeals. Here's my theory, and I'm asking you for...
So you're telling me you should deny it? I don't want to rule on it.
No, 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 now listen, now listen. We got our own Board of Assessment Review because we didn't like the way the county commissioners were doing it. The county commissioners right now has an assessment review board that is probably one of the best in the state. Now, what you're, what you're doing, you put people on that board that don't have the experience to be on that board.
That's the problem. You were better off to shut the board down and go to the county commissioners' Board of Appeals. That way there'll be no mistakes. Juanita is on that board. She's very good at it. This, uh, a friend of mine is turning on that board. And he's one of the probably best attorney, land attorney there is. And three other people. They're great. Our board is not great. In other words, the last time that board met, I almost, and I should have, or wish I did, but I'm, I'm confident I'm going to make sure that board. So you, I'll just tell you what I believe.
Are we required to rule on this tonight, or can we vote on it?
Absolutely not.
I move that we review full documentation for both sides before we make a decision.
So is that motion to table? Motion to table outside of that.
And, uh, as Ronnie says, he's turning all his notes over to you. I will go back in my, you know, two-and-a-half inches of files and copy everything that's out of the bowl, including deeds in the eighteen hundreds, and give that so both sets of documents could be submitted.
The old times are not going to affect this. This is, this is assessment.
What I would suggest is that you both provide the information you feel would be appropriate to me.
Right.
And I will give it to the board.
Okay.
I'll make copies for all of them.
That's fine.
So that they each have their own set of documents.
Yep. And I, I want you people to read it.
We intend on that.
Yeah. Read it with understanding, please.
I, I'm particularly concerned with the, with the Supreme Court case and, and the ruling on that.
Well, again, if this-
This gentleman has been told a couple of different things. Where is the information coming from this town? To people who go, why don't we have a clear set of rules? What is the rule? Can he, could he have sold two parcels, couldn't he? Where was the information coming from? Why do we continue to have misinformation, misdirection, different answers to this person than that person? It continues, 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 and it doesn't stop. It feels like to me, and this has been my gripe from when I agree in six years ago, is that we make assumptions for some people and they can do whatever they want, and then others have to follow the rules. It needs to stop.
Right. We need to go by the rules, just like the town attorney says. Go by the rules that you got to go home.
So there's a motion on the table?
That is the best way to go following.
Okay.
We have to move on.
Yeah.
I just, I'd like to read, I, I'm certainly, I would like to read what the starting two case states. I think that will certainly have an impact on our understanding. But I'd like to see all the documentation.
There is only one request I requested that goes to the Board of Appeals. And I talked to Christine about it. Not to defend me, but our town attorney now, the case's attorney is now. She is one of the best in the state.
Well, let's take it one step at a time.
Yep. Good idea.
Yes, Dave.
Has the town attorney looked at this problem?
No, not at this point. No. It needs to progress a little bit further before-
It may, perhaps, perhaps at some point, she should be consulted.
Yeah, I don't think that would happen until there was denial.
Right. Like you're saying it.
Right.
Right, I think if she reviewed it before, it went to Board of Appeals, that might be, create a conflict where she didn't represent the Board of Appeals.
Right. Yeah.
Can I ask one question to Ronnie? Ronnie, do you have any disagreement in terms of the acreage? I guess they're interlocked, so, you know, I was just wondering-
It pretty well equaled out. It's just that I took three acres out of A and held it in C. So that would throw the abatement off. You justifiably will get an abatement, the extra acreage in, in lot A. I needed a little more than that, because I took the three acres. Like I say, I left it in forty-two C. Which, now you're getting into the, the problem with the two abatements you filed. You, you, you're dealing with two, two separate cases. So you're trying to put them together, and I think you can't.
Well, the reason I filed two abatements is we had two tax bills.
Yeah.
So I did an abatement for each, for each one.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but when you did, you, you put the acres together. A, you, you added the three acres. C, the A. Oh, I said an abatement. It's good to go, right?
Well, no, because we still need to see the understanding of all the paperwork. We, we're not going to rule on it tonight. We need to see the paperwork.
No, I mean, it, it's good that we can talk about it. Maybe sometimes.
So are you saying that maybe there could be an agreement between you and Mr. Paris if it is filed
As one abatement?
Yeah.
Why would that affect it?
No, yeah, yeah. What I would like to do is if, if it's, have it separated. I would, I'd like to him get the bigger abatement for A. But leave, say, C alone unless vital C. And if it, if it goes to the Board of Appeals, not to represent me, but I want the town attorney to represent the town.
Well, let's, let's take it one step at a time.
She's, she's, she's so good at it. It would be kind of, you know.
So Ronnie, if I understand you right, if I filed a new abatement request for forty-two A and subtracted out the three-point-one-one acres, taking it down to thirteen acres, that, and recalculated
Yeah.
the thing, then that-
That, that, that number would go online.
Yeah, but you still have the, you'd have, still have the three-acre separate parcel scenario that has not been addressed.
If we did that, yeah. And that could be asked-
I think it's, it's, let's look at the big picture first and see where it lands.
If there's a simple solution to one of the laws, then let's take the simple-
Yeah, and, and there is some-
Well, it's not. If he, if Jay files the one piece-
If there's an agreement, we don't have-
I know he's an agreement.
But it sounds like that they could have some conversation and come up with partial agreement rather than... The big question is the-
Yeah, no one has to talk, that's for sure.
Exactly.
It does sound that way.
Right.
And Jay, me, and the press are all on the line.
It still sounds like there's something that we can't resolve at all, like you guys talked about, we could resolve a huge portion of.
It, it's a funny thing, because when I was in Bowman, I had the same problem. And two of them got their lawyers on me because of the same thing. With the, with the town road splitting the law. And one of them was in Tree Grove. And he comes to me and he says, "Well, look, I've been paying bad acres for that piece across the road." Yeah, so, well, that'll be two months. No, it isn't two months. You, you take the just value of that lot. And you get the first acre, because you're going to sell it on that. And the other one, I think, was, no, this one was awful. And this guy, he had a quarter of an acre on the other side of the road. It was being assessed of the piece on the other side. Well, he bought an acre with it. Now it becomes a conforming law to Brophy. And I kind of thought, "You do that, you're going to get a tax bill for it because town road goes through the border." Well, he got my lawyer, he called, his lawyer called me in. I don't know who the attorney is at Bowman, but it's, it's another pretty good woman from Poland. And she moved my paper both times.
Well, I would just like to see us be able to work most of this out so it doesn't cost a lot in attorney fees or-
On both sides?
Yeah. So the more we can work out between the two of you and then what's left over for us to deal with makes sense to me. I don't want to see, I spend a lot of money in attorney fees, I don't want to see you spend a lot in attorney fees. If there's an easy solution.
Well, I'll do a shrunken forty-two A. And I, um, the only other thing that if forty-two C has a very high value, if I give the almost unusable six-foot-wide strip of, uh, land down by the water to Ed Larrabee in a quick gain deed, that would become a non-waterfront lot, correct?
But you're going to be hit with a view.
Well, I, I know that, but you can't build a house anywhere that has a view. I explained that to Kathleen.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you can do that, if you're-
But I'll, I'll reface Jay.
With, with my thing, though, I, I, I really, in my opinion, is you could sell both of them. Without a problem. Because you, it lived, uh, lived in that house since two thousand four. That new house. You could sell the lots, you know?
Unfortunately, though, Kathy brings up the point that he's been given misinformation from some, you know, and it's, you know, where he thinks he can sell one, you're saying he can sell two. We need to fully explain that to the town residents, what their options are. So that there are, there is not a mixed, a mixed message. Everyone should have the same level playing field, right?
Yes. And that's usually where I'm quite pretty good with.
I would like to know about it with time, Ron.
That's right, that's pretty good.
I mean, we should, we should, I, I believe the town should work towards helping the residents achieve versus trying to increase tax value. I think we should show them options from that, you know, we-
You, you, you three assesses this like I am. I'm, I'm a licensed assessor.
But we shouldn't have, we shouldn't hide a fact that they can do something to increase the tax-
That's your job.
I'm sorry?
Your job is to find the just value of that lot.
But, well, there's, there's, but there's, there's, if we don't buy market value, which you have-
Market value, just value, if you lose, that's the same thing.
All I'm saying is if the rule in this town is you can sell two lots, then it should be common knowledge to everyone-
And how did you win?
It's a state law. It's a state law.
Oh, state, yeah.
Right, but somewhere he got the information, was it the planning board, was it, uh, call to town hall? I don't know. But I-
We should be promoting that relationship.
Right.
That, you know, what, how, how to help our residents move forward.
But I understand, there's rules and laws you have to go by and that we need to go by, and I get that. Just value is market value. Plain and simple. I, I just want to s- My goal and my thought is to clean up some of this misinformation, misunderstanding of what-
Get to the bottom of it. Get to the bottom of it.
Moves up. And if we can work this out and not get tons of attorneys involved, it's a lean win for everyone.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Was there another abatement?
Yes, I do.
So Jay, go sell that one away.
On, on April twenty-second, or whatever that is.
He doesn't have to wait.
March third.
Oh, I've, I've got some paperwork.
I've got some paperwork.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
Sorry that we kept you up so late. With our, uh,
It's only six-
I would call it squabbling, but, uh, disagreement. Thank you for taking the time, and we will proceed to try to write the file.
Thank you. The most important thing is that we all get to understand what has been and what should be going forward. And make sure that we have ways to convey that information to everyone the same.
Consistent message. Yes. Something that I think we're missing, something.
These things are somewhere.
Should be emailed.
Ask us to Suzanne, while he's looking for stuff.
Suzanne.
I'm getting right here.
Maybe saying that if I get ruled by the tractor trailer tomorrow, straighten out the ice now.
Do you mind if we have that to town hall tomorrow?
It's proof. And, and answer it.
I don't really like going there over very hard yourself anymore.
No.
Okay, this one, this one's pretty simple, straightforward.
I felt safer.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening, Jay.
This comes from account six-sixty-three. Nancy Jade Lackin applied for veteran exemption.
Applied for a what?
A veteran's exemption.
A veteran.
Yeah, on a disability. Military, and I, that's the first time, I'm sorry. I've come my way. Obviously, she did get it. It amounts to sixty-three dollars as an abatement. If you can write one of these up, if you want to pass it through. I've got one more to do next time I'm here.
So you're, you're recommending that that abatement be granted?
No question about it. I put the paperwork in one story. And I'll give it to you.
We don't have that. No. Do you have copies of that?
You have copies?
Uh, let's see, I may have more.
Yes, I do.
Let's do it.
I have two. Do they have two separate ones?
You might find that fourth one.
Nancy Jane. You can send Jessica's sparkly right.
Okay. So I move that the abatement be approved as presented.
And is it, why is it simply because she's a vet, a, a disabled veteran?
Yes.
Nothing else is affecting that, just her status as a veteran?
No, and that's not the state law. All she has to do is be a hundred percent stated she's a hundred percent disability, which they did. And she's accepted.
Then it's really it's broken, it's super easy to break. I second the fact that we should approve it?
I'm favoring it.
I'll find this one as a short, a really bright one. You have another order now?
You don't need it?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 this is, um, this is, this is the, this is the-
I find sign that she's-
It's a cloud on her face. Yeah. All right, I'll start this one. Is this a two-part sign? Sign? Yes. It's a thing because-
Who did you sign?
You signed it in her name. You signed it under my name. Let's see, what did you do? You signed it with a bad one's name.
Well, there's a line.
No, you have to see it.
Three times the charm.
It, it better be.
Want to take this back and shred it? We have four, we have four pages. Four slides. One more down.
So did you say you had a note? No?
Well, that's not- So what is this, okay, what is this line?
That's where you can eat the sign.
And what about down here?
And down there.
Isn't that what I signed last time?
No, it's a bad one's name. You signed it under your name.
I swear that's Seltzer in there. Okay.
You put Suzanne, I think.
Okay.
I think that was asked. Check out. Would you check our work? Any public comments? You can hold it, but we adjourn. What he says, something in favor.